Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to begin by thanking our media partners for reporting on and broadcasting our meeting. We will get to swearing you in in a moment, Councilor Grandinetti, but I'd like to welcome you back on behalf of the entire council. Look forward to working with you over the next year. Before we get going, I do want to thank Rotary. I think we can all agree, we had a tremendous Rotary Fest again this year. It was a great parade. And what Rotary does for our community is really quite tremendous. So I wanted to take a moment, just on behalf of the community, to thank all the Rotarians and all the volunteers for their hard work. It was a great event, and it was certainly enriched the community. So thank them very much. Thank them very much for that. Before we move on and get the meeting to order, there's also another event going on that Councilor Myers wanted just to bring everybody's attention, and then we'll move on. Councilor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope that most folks have noticed the red inflated igloo in the northeast corner of Station Mall parking lot. If you haven't, get on down there and be sure and take in the movie Horizon. It's a 360-degree cinematic movie, similar to an IMAX-type presentation. And it's, the igloo is referred to as Sesqui, which of course is short for Sesquittennial. And it's here in Sault Ste. Marie. It's free of charge. It's a 20-minute movie. I believe Councilor Hoopanen was there as acting mayor on Sunday for the opening. Councilor Fad I know has seen it, and it's really something to see. So get on down and take a look at it. I know the tour director, when I was talking to him, he said, "Sault Ste. Marie has been awesome in its response to watching and coming and seeing the movie." And he said, "The volunteers are just out of this world, too. It's been really terrific." So, great opportunity for us, no cost to the city taxpayers in Sault Ste. Marie, but a wonderful gift of an opportunity because of where we're located geographically. It worked out great. So be sure and get down and see Sesqui. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we will call the meeting to order, adopt the minutes, and once we adopt the minutes, Councilor Grandinetti, we will swear you in.
A motion by Councilors Butland and Krompottich that the minutes of regular council meeting of June 26, 2017 be approved?
All in favor. Carried. Okay, so, yeah, Councilor Grandinetti, I believe you have the oath in front of you?
I do.
Okay, so the clerk will swear that oath.
I, Ozzy Grandinetti, have been appointed to the office of Councilor Ward Six in the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct and indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is the same force and effect as made under oath.
So if you can just swear that, and the clerk will swear your oath.
Thank you.
So next, we have declarations of pecuniary interests. Anybody? Councilor Turco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 6.21, municipal law enforcement officers and any relevant bylaw, Spas employed by police services.
Thank you. Councilor Fada?
No, none. I thought I saw your hands.
Councilor Krompottich?
Yes, item 6.3, retention of restructuring lawyer fee update. Got a conflict. I'm an employee of Algoma Steel, and I'm also a USW union coordinator.
Very good. Thank you. Councilor Grandinetti?
I have a conflict on item 6.3, retention of restructuring lawyer fee update. I'm employed by SR Steel.
Very good. Anybody else on this side? Seeing none?
Under Agenda Item Four, I have a motion by Councilors Christian and Krompottich, resolved that the Agenda and Addendum for July 17, 2017, City Council meeting as presented be approved. And I should point out that Agenda Item 6.20, Amendment to Bylaw 2012-213, is actually not going to be discussed tonight. A revised report will appear on the August 21 Agenda.
So 6.20 is being pulled, and it will be returned in August, and there will be an updated report. So with the exception of pulling 6.20, all in favor? Agenda is approved as amended.
Under Agenda Item 5.1, 2017 user fee study, Andrew Mirabella of Hemsun Consulting Limited is in attendance with respect to Agenda Item 7.1.1.
Welcome to council, Mr. Mirabella. So I think you have a presentation for us today? Very good. So we'll let you go through that, and then if any council has any questions of you or staff, we can ask them at that time.
Sorry. Good evening. My name is Andrew Mirabella. I'm a consultant at Hemsun. I've been working over the last several months with the city and city staff on developing and coming up with the user fee review and developing the report. And today, what we're going to be doing is going over the presentation of results with you. To my understanding, the information that we're presenting here is being received for information purposes only. There will be staff reports and subsequent reports from staff at a later date with specific recommendations on the user fees and kind of the outcomes of this study. So just to kind of go over a little bit of what we're going to be doing and what we're going to be talking about here today, what our overall study objectives are and what Hemsun has been retained to do, and what we've been mandated to calculate in kind of the terms of our reference of our analysis here. And we'll get into what the full cost recovery is. And really, what that means is what full cost recovery is. We're going to be looking at all the cost considerations in terms of the full cost of providing services. Once we look at the full cost of providing services, we're going to get into what the revenue analysis is. So looking at all the revenues that are going to be generated from the user fees that are considered under this analysis. And then we'll be getting into a bit of the gap analysis. And really, what that is, is looking at all the costs of providing the user fee-related services, which we've considered, versus the revenues that are going to be generated from those specific fees, and what the balance is, and what the shortcoming is and the shortfall is in some of those services. And you'll notice when we get to the analysis itself, some of the shortfalls in terms of what the current user fees are generating in terms of revenue versus the total cost of providing that services is quite great, but in some instances, the actual fees that you currently have in place are quite close to full cost recovery. Then we'll get into a bit of a little bit of a benchmarking analysis. We did look at a high-level review of the user fees employed in the city of Sault Ste. Marie, as well as those fees that are employed elsewhere in surrounding jurisdictions of Timmins, North Bay, Greater Sudbury, and Thunder Bay. And then we'll finally cap off with some implementation options for the city to consider when looking at setting user fees going forward. So in terms of our study objectives, we've been really retained to undertake a full cost of service analysis. And most fees contained in the user fees and service charges bylaw of 2016-180 have been reviewed. There have been some exceptions, which certain fees have been excluded from the analysis, which separate type analyses have been underway or currently going to be underway. So we haven't been retained at least to look at those types of fees. And we've certainly been able to, when we look at calculating full cost recovery fees, we have to do so within the parameters and the restrictions of the provincial legislation, which kind of we have to work around. And those are specifically related to legislation of the Planning Act, the Building Code Act, the Funeral, Burial, and Crimeation Services Act, as well as the Municipal Act. So we're certainly in a bit of a confined regulatory environment that we have to be consistent with when setting user fees. Part of our study objective is really looking at a high-level comparative view of those user fees in neighboring and similar type municipalities. And really, the information that's in our report and what we've been mandated to do is to be used when setting fee rates, whether those fee rates be full cost recovery or otherwise. And we recognize when we get into some of the analysis that the user fees, especially the full cost recovery user fees, are maybe perhaps unsustainable in terms of a full cost recovery standpoint, but when setting user fees, consistent with the GFOA requirements, you should be able to know what the direct and indirect cost of providing those services are when setting user fees. So that information is now available, and city staff can go ahead and use that information to actually go ahead and set user fees accordingly to your own abolition. So in terms of some of the user fees reviewed under the bylaw, we're looking at about close to 650 fees in nine different service categories, which we've reviewed. Certainly, the bulk of the user fees in terms of quantum of fees is really in the community services and as well as your public works, your transportation and cemetery fee schedule. Those are certainly the bulk of the fees. And really, what we're looking at is the user fees considered under the study really only represent a portion of your total 2017 budgeted user fee revenue. So in terms of your budget, you're looking at about $35 million in user fees. We're only accounting for a portion of that, about $7 million. So about 30% of your property tax-supported user fees is really what we're considering under this study. And you see, again, of that 650 fees, there are some additional fees in that bylaw, largely related to legal agreements or existing arrangements that are already taking place, or your landfill site fees, which are currently not, were not part of the scope of work, and we haven't looked at it under our analysis. So in terms of full cost recovery, and we like to think about it as, among best practices established by GFOAs, that the cost of providing services should be calculated when determining the basis for setting user fees. And when we talk about full cost recovery, we're really looking at it into two different components. One being your direct cost, and the second being your indirect cost or your corporate overhead cost. Your direct costs really account for the majority of the cost of providing the services, and that really looks at all salaries and benefits. The operating costs are the resources used by those delivering the services. That could be any of the materials or any of the resources within that are used in terms of city hall expenditures that are used in providing those services and delivering those services. And then the third component is really the asset management requirements. So, for example, facilities, if your major fleet and your equipment. So we have taken into account the replacement provisions required to, of city hall, for example, or the recreation facilities of which those services are being delivered, as well as major fleet or major equipment, such as the buses, which actually deliver the services. The full cost and the replacement provisions of those requirements have been built into the calculation. And of the direct cost components, certainly the salaries, wages, and benefits are the most robust component of the full cost recovery analysis, and especially of the direct cost. The second component is your indirect corporate overhead cost. And those include costs incurred by your corporate and administration department to support the delivery of services. So that includes areas such as finance and human resources, or information technology, or perhaps mayor and council itself, which really support the delivery of user fees. So you're not actually the ones that are being delivered in the service, but certainly as a corporate function, making sure the city runs as a whole and runs smoothly, those are costs which can be incorporated into the calculation. And what we've done as part of our analysis, we really looked at attributing corporate cost, corporate why to all different city departments. And about $12 million in corporate costs has been allocated across all the different areas, but really only a small portion of that number gets brought into and rolled into the user fee calculation, because that's the amount that actually can be attributed to the user fees that have been supported and considered under this study. And those two elements alone really make up the full cost of service provision. So when we look at the cost being versus direct and indirect, just to give a bit of a high-level example here and review of it, the total cost of providing the services in the range of about $22.6 million, or close to $23 million is the total cost of providing the service for all the different fee categories, which we see here, from planning to recreation to transit, to your clerks and finance fees. And what's evident from the pie graph here is that really your transit and recreation and culture services really represent the largest share of total cost. And that's really the bulk of where the analysis in terms of the cost is. And that's also largely related to those of the areas that have the largest user fees. And what you have is all the blue, the blue kind of the pie graphs is representing all your direct costs, and your red part of the pie is your indirect corporate overhead cost. And that indirect corporate overhead cost represents about 11% of the total cost of providing the service. And that relationship between direct and indirect cost is quite reasonable and consistent with what we see in other jurisdictions. So we like to kind of put that number into perspective of what we see from place to place. And generally, that's the range of what we see as typical. And that corporate overhead did get distributed to all the different fee categories and all the different user fees itself in terms of the corporate overhead support. So once we've kind of looked at the actual cost analysis and the total cost of providing the services, we really have to look at what the projection of future activity is, and really looking at the revenue considerations. So when we were coming up with our analysis, we wanted to look at, A, what the 2017 budgeted revenue is, but as well as what has been happening in terms of user fee-related revenue. So for only the revenues that are considered with user fees under this, under this study over the last five years. And really, activity in terms of user fee-related revenue has been fairly constant, with little year-over-year fluctuation, which gives us the confidence in the actual 2017 budgeted revenues in terms of what we can use in our analysis when setting fee rates. So those 2017 budgeted revenues, for the most part, have been incorporated and used as the basis for our denominator and our calculation in terms of what user fee revenues we can anticipate when calculating the rates. And historically, that revenue as relationship has been just over $7 million. And you'll see our, our green bar is our 2017 projection, which is roughly about $7 million, so consistent with the last five years. It's important to note, again, this is A, only within the user fee-related revenues for the fees considered, and any non-user fee-related revenues that have come in and do support the service have been accounted for and used to offset the total cost of providing that service. So, for example, gas taxes that come in for transit services have been used and applied for against the actual cost of it, but we're only really looking at the user fee-related component. So we have taken a robust analysis and accounted for everything. So just kind of summarizing, once we know the total cost of providing the service being at $22.6 million, and the revenues to be approximately $7 million, really looking at what are the gaps and where the differences between costs and revenues are in relationship with setting fees. And the table here really summarizes that analysis and where the gaps are by the different service areas and user fee-related service areas that we've considered under this study. And really, this table does perhaps simplify the analysis a bit. It was a very robust and complex exercise in allocating all the budget and costs accordingly to all the different departments, but certainly, this provides a snapshot of the total cost. So what we have here is just in terms of the actual table itself, just a high-level walkthrough. We have the service areas on the left part of the table, your cost, both direct and indirect by service areas. And again, your recreation and transit, including parking, is certainly the biggest cost component of the entire analysis that we've considered. And that being, and then something at the bottom is a cumulative of about $22.6 million. The 2017 projected revenues by each of the categories that are generated from user fees to be about the $7 million. And then the variance in terms of both a dollar value, as well as a percentage for each of the different categories. And certainly, from the, from the table, it suggests that your recreation and transit services are certainly the most subsidized services in the city, with recreation and culture representing about 400%, transit services at about 270%. On the converse side of that is areas such as building, where your current fees are recovering nearly almost all the cost, and the shortfall is only about 6%. And the kind of the same story, again, is almost for your clerks and finance fees, where the gap is relatively lower, margin lower, and it's about 17%. So that's kind of the summary in terms of the gap analysis. And certainly, from our perspective, when we're calculating the fees, this is the high roll-up summary of all the different departments. For certain areas, especially for planning, for example, we had to look at it according with the Planning Act, the cost of providing service by application type. So the, the analysis does go into a next step into a further detailed perspective, and I'll show you that on the next slide. This is an example from recreation and culture, where we have the total cost of providing the service and the gap as a total of the service being 400%, but you see the variances and the analysis has been recognized by different permit and service types within each area. And what this is indicating is that actually athletic fields are really the actual most subsidized within the recreation and culture category, but your areas on the converse of your marina fees, for example, are actually much closer to full cost recovery at 26%. So there is quite a variance between the different actual permit and fee categories within each area that make up the total of actual gap between costs and revenues. So as part of our analysis, you know, once we've provided the city with the actual total cost of providing the services, and what the actual fundamental, the gaps are of each of the different areas, and the actual fee rates that accompany them, we did do a bit of a benchmark analysis as to comparing what the current Sault Ste. Marie fees that are in place relative to the benchmark range of Timmins, Thunder Bay, Greater Sudbury, and North Bay, looking at those four competing municipalities. And really, the user fees that selected do represent a, some of the largest user fee revenues that we've considered under the study. So the range of fees in this table do represent about 50% of total, or just over 50% of total revenues of that $7 million. And largely, that's related to areas such as your transit, your cash fares, and your monthly passes as well, which is a big component of that. But overall, from our benchmark analysis, really indicating that your, the fees in general are lower than the fees charged in similar and surrounding jurisdictions. And that range is about, on average, 15%, but certainly, the range and spectrum of differences can be in the, in the 5% to 25% or 30% range or greater. And in some instances, for example, in your building department, the residential permit fees are considered to be on the high end of the spectrum. And this is just a, you know, this type of analysis does indicate that there may be some instances where the fees can be increased. That being said, this analysis is strictly a fee-to-fee comparison, and any service level differences which may exist has not been taken into consideration. So it really just is a high-level view of the fees that are currently charged versus the fees in, relatively in the surrounding jurisdictions of the same comparison. So it is an apple-to-apple comparison.
So in that respect, if one of the communities had development charges, that would be factored into this? Their, their building permit fee would be lower likely because of the development charge, but that wouldn't be factored into your chart, or would it?
No. The, this is just looking at strictly the, the fees that are charged in that, in one municipality to the other. Whether other funding sources are available in other municipalities is kind of a separate issue altogether. So just kind of in terms of some implementation options and kind of considering the whole framework of the analysis and where we've come, really, you know, the, the entire and the robustness of the analysis really looked at what the total cost of providing the services are, and providing the city with full cost recovery rates, and whether the city moves to implement full cost recovery rates or a rate that is lower than full cost recovery. There's a number of kind of issues that you're probably going to be considering when you're actually looking to set those fees in the next couple of months. And one of those items is, and certainly from a financial perspective, as, and our kind of key mandate is at least what we want to instill upon the city. And really, the key of our analysis is the revenue shortfall that generally arises from less than full cost recovery fees. So certainly, any fee that is not at full cost recovery, there's an inherent revenue loss or subsidization from the tax base or user fee base, which has to be considered and at least quantified. And our report at least allows the city to make those types of calculations. There's certainly a general benefit of providing some services, and there's certainly a benefit to implementing less than full cost recovery fees in certain areas. And that might be in the sense of, for example, rezoning or official plan amendment, where there's broader community benefits associated with that application, that processing of that application. Or the general benefit of providing a promoting active living or healthy living with a reduction in the recreation fees. That being said, the level of subsidy is something that, that needs to be considered and be ironed out. Certainly, the competitiveness with the city and the surrounding areas in terms of the Algoma region, as well as your key comparative municipalities, has to be taken into consideration. And then there's your long-term strategic objectives in terms of both a fiscal perspective, in terms of how much should be subsidized from the tax base from user fee-related services, versus just general long-term objectives of, again, the example of providing or promoting healthy living and active living within a municipality. Then there's the kind of economic principle of the ability for the applicant or the service person to pay the fees. If the fee is certainly priced to the point where someone can't pay the fee, then they just won't use the service, and that will obviously have an inherent different effect on the municipality itself. From our perspective, the fee review should be updated on a five-year review basis to ensure that the nexus that exists between the service provided and the fee charged does still exist. And annual indexing to the fees, which you've currently been doing, are continued to be in place throughout the five-year period. And as part of our analysis, in the executive summary of the report, we did identify a small number of new fees and practices which can be considered or recommended at least for future consideration. And that could range in terms of our practices of introducing or considering the implementation of resident surcharges on, on various different recreation programs. Or it could be in terms of a new fee for which fee rates are, you know, service is being provided, and there's a cost associated with providing that service with no fees charged. So we want to capture a new fee that can, that's associated with that work that's being done. And we've listed those fees in the executive summary, but that's generally the presentation that we have. And certainly, from a next steps perspective, Hemsun has provided the staff with a, with an Excel model, a report, and all the financial tools associated with all the user fees considered in this study. And I suspect that the new user fee bylaw and recommendations that you put forward, or at least work together with over the next couple of months to come to a point of deciding what those user fees should be relative to, you know, their, your financial goals. So that's the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to yield any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the report. We'll start with Councilor Huppin.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, through you to Andrew. Thank you very much. I'd like to say I understood everything, but I grasped a few things. My question is, do you know what percentage of the user fees are fully recovered?
Through your worship, there, at the moment, there virtually is no user fees that are at full cost recovery. The closest area at least is going to be in your building department, where those are the fees closest to full cost recovery. And the other one that I can think of is the marriage licenses, which are currently at near full cost recovery. But some of them, the gap is fairly close to that point, and some of them, the variance is a lot greater.
Okay, that's good. And can you remind me again, what are the most subsidized services?
Through, through the worship, the two most subsidized services are recreation and culture services, as well as your transit services. And to that point, that is generally something that we see in virtually all municipalities. And you're not, and you're not alone in having those services to be the most subsidized, and certainly on the recreation side.
Okay, and that was my last part of my question, is that standard? So thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I look at the chart that mines down a little further on the Recreation and Culture Division, athletic fields at 1,254% variance, I guess, I mean, we're receiving this information, I guess I'm already trying to figure out what I'm going to do with it. Because if I think of athletic fields, what could we ever do to try to cost recover? I mean, we can't put a gate on our field. I mean, we do have some user fees now. I'd like to, through you, Mr. Mayor, ask our Commissioner of Finance if it could enlighten me a little bit as to, do we have any revenue now? I mean, it's 1,254% variance, but on, say, the athletic fields as one example.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Myers. You'll see on the athletic fields, we do receive some revenue on that. The cost and the indirect cost is obviously where the, the gap is happening. But staff will be coming back. They're going to look at every area. We're going to come back with a recommendation to council as part of the budget process, and either set a benchmark for where we think the cost recovery should be, or, and also recommendations for fees that we think should be at full cost recovery. And then council will be able to kind of... And then council will be able to kind of digest that and put their input in at that stage.
Okay, thank you for saying that. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to continue on that line a bit. So, for example, looking at the athletic fields, and yes, sixty-two thousand dollars or sixty-one one in revenue, but the costs are eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So I guess I'm still trying to use that as one example to get my head around, how would we draw that sixty-one thousand now in revenue? What do we do? Do we charge a nominal fee to use the athletic field, or what would be an example of how we are getting some revenue now out of our athletic fields that costs eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand to operate?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers, that might be better answered by the Deputy CIO for that area, because I'm not sure what the fees are.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Bear. Is that a fair question?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, you're correct, the user fees there for the different groups, the sports clubs, football, et cetera, that use those fields would make up the revenues that we generate towards the athletic fields line item.
So at the, again, I just repeat, the the point that's in front of us is that there's sixty-one thousand dollars in revenue we get now, but it costs us eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand to operate it. So would I understand from the Commissioner of Finance's comments a moment ago that staff might bring back to us something dramatically different to narrow that gap? I I guess I'm trying to get my head around how that would impact our groups and how we would do that. Like, if you're going to bring a policy that says we should be doing this, this, and so it's across all the areas, I think by these variances that are so huge, like the marina, but the marina is only operating so many weeks out of the year, too, compared to perhaps the fields and things like that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers, yes, as part of our recommendation, we're going to be looking at the matrix, see what the costs are, and again, the revenues, and make a recommendation. As Mr. Maribella has pointed out, not everything is going to be full cost recovery, and what you're seeing there is probably very similar to other municipalities, that your community services is one of the areas that is subsidized by the tax base. But we will set a benchmark, and it'll be in comparative in comparison to our other northern municipalities, and we'll be looking at competitiveness, ability to pay, et cetera. We will not be bringing back a thousand percent increase on athletic.
That's encouraging to hear. I guess the other part of that is we did get the other information on the chart where we're lower, or we're higher, and so on, and I appreciate that. But I think in the end, we want to look at Sault Ste. Marie, because I think the mayor alluded to it. I find it a wee bit challenging, and we don't know what's being offered for those services, so it's hard to compare, and I think our consultant told us that, apples to apples. So I don't know how council's even going to be equipped to agree or not agree with the recommendation from staff, and we really don't know what the apples to apples is, and I'm not suggesting, I mean, that would be a massive project, I'm sure, to do, but it's going to be somewhat of a challenge, I would think, for us to know what we should do, even if we're lower than somebody else, not knowing what that somebody else provides. I guess that's a rhetorical question. I'll go on to another one.
Is it a question, or is it more rhetorical question? Yeah, please.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so coming back to then the how we arrived at the, I'm still in the recreation and culture division, because it's one I'm familiar with. When you look at the costs directly, and then look at the historic site board column for a moment, because I'm intimately familiar with that one, as is I think Counsel Turco and Hupin and others that have sat on that board. So you're saying that the costs related to, and historic site board's the administrative name, I guess we're talking about the Urbanity and Clerg National Historic Site, is that what we're talking about there? Because that is the, that's the facility?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers, that would probably be best answered by Andrew, he did the detail work on that.
Okay. So what is the historic site board, as indicated here, for costs?
Through through the worship, that is related to the to that specific site, and it's detailed in the user fee bylaw as the historic site board and as well as the budget, so that that budget line item.
I appreciate that. No, no, that I appreciate that, but it but so so it's a, it's the Urbanity and Clerg National Historic Site Heritage Discovery Center. So the point here is that it, we know by the financial records and operations that it costs us four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year to operate that site. Through you, Mr. Air, to Chris, is that is that, like, that's verifiable, though, in our own, apart from the consultant, that's verifiable, those are figures that are in our own budget, correct? That's what it costs?
Through you, Mr. Air, to Counsel Myers, has it has been indicated there's direct and indirect costs?
Yes, yes.
What you see in their budget for that would be just the direct costs.
Okay.
So there's the matrix that they have built so that we can allocate the indirect costs to all these different areas.
Okay. And I guess that's where I'm I'm getting a bit lost, is that I'm trying to understand how we're applying the figures to get these costs and indirect costs that show us the variances, but I'll leave it at that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
But I do think they show that in the larger report.
Yes.
They show how they apply the figures.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So we'll go to Counsel Fatah.
I'm looking at the chart here for the user user-related revenues, and two thousand thirteen was well over half a million dollars more than the previous year and the next four years. Do you know why that it's such a higher amount than the other four years?
Through through the worship, the two thousand thirteen, the above-average, I guess, revenue is is really related to a large institutional and government building permit issued, which was, you know, which kind of swayed and skewed the results upward in that year, as well as on the building permit fee analysis. So we did have to take that into account, because that was higher than the average and kind of was anomaly.
In terms of user fees, what what's your opinion on user fees for people living outside the city? Because those people are getting a large benefit in their taxes, and they're getting all the benefits that the Sault Ste. Marie taxpayers pay for.
Through the worship, and so non-resident surcharges are quite common in terms of municipalities that levy them, and certainly what it would do is be applied on on a specific program or on the administration of or purchasing of that service. And certainly, that that would essentially act as a, you know, they would they would have to pay a premium to come use a Sault Ste. Marie service, and especially even in programming side of of things as well, there could be a process where the implementation, there's a delay in enrollment of a program, so city residents always get the first, I guess, first cut or first crack at at enrolling in the program or being the first ones to use that type of service. So it certainly is is a common practice, certainly very well amongst GTA-type municipalities as well as others. And, you know, there's just a caveat to it, just when implementing it and when considering it, you have to look at the converse of it, if it affects any utilization rates on 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 the operation side, and if it would affect the revenues. Certainly, there has to be a bit of a cost-benefit analysis done when considering that that type of implementation.
I'm not sure if I should ask this question, but I guess I'll just, again, bounce it off you.
But you're going to, but you're going to.
We've got about seventy-six public parks in Sault Ste. Marie, and each one of those needs a certain amount of maintenance, care, and costs. Is there, is is that something, I mean, we are going through a study right now to figure out what we're going to do, but it seems to me that you can cut costs if you can find ways perhaps to to reduce the number of parks, and whether people might think it's.
That you're asking a question that's outside of his his consulting kind of portfolio. So you're talking about cutting parks out. So he literally just looked at our user fees, where we have user fees, how we constitute them, how they compare to other municipalities' user fees. He's not going to give us any advice or direction about how many parks we should have in the community council.
No, I guess I thought maybe he might he might have an opinion.
Through through the worship, I don't have any specific comments on that, but I can say that there's certainly with, you know, with the reduction in the number of anything, whether it be facilities or parks, there's obviously a reduction in operating costs and savings, which get, you know, which would get transpired into a total sum of what you would have to recover through fees. But aside from that, and that's probably as far as I'll go with that, but that's, you know, just just with anything, if there's less of something, there's less costs, so we'll see what.
Any more questions, Counsel Fatah on his report? Counsel Bruni?
Question to the Deputy CIO. When will this report come back to us regarding the user fee recommendations?
I I think that they'd indicated, what was it, shall I shall, but I think I think at budget time, they're going to bring us back some recommendations.
So so this won't affect the arenas and the swimming? I mean, this is not for two thousand seventeen.
There's no recommendation before us to change user fees.
I know, but there will be a recommendation coming forward in at budget time, correct?
Thank you.
With recommendations, whatever, to reduce or increase, but obviously.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Bruni, that is correct. We will be coming forward as part of the two thousand eighteen budget deliberations to give some potential avenues relative to the user fees for implementation in two thousand eighteen. Considerations there, of course, would be when you could implement it in two thousand eighteen, et cetera.
Thank you very much.
Nothing is being considered for two thousand seventeen.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Counsel Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A generalization, no surprise, we are generally below our northern counterparts in user fees, correct?
Through the worship, correct, yeah. That's correct, yes.
Do we compare also to southern Ontario? Do we do that at all?
Through the worship, we did not specifically look at the user fees that are in force in any of the GTA municipalities, just from our experience in certain GTA municipalities where we've done user fee-related work. User fees in GTA municipalities are would, in most cases, in some here, would be higher as well, so you would still be placed on the lower end of the spectrum. But that's relative, you know, depending on which fees and 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 the specifics of it, but we didn't do a detailed analysis of other southern Ontario municipalities.
Not sure. I guess I'd go to the CIO. I agree with a couple of comments saying, well, if you're comparing what we do in our planning department with another planning department, that should determine what the user fee should be. Do our various departments not communicate with other departments, saying, what are you doing, and how you decide on your user fee and compare what we're doing? Is that a is that a regular exercise or not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Butler, yes, it is a regular exercise, and also, as the consultant has pointed out, that's one consideration. There's other considerations in terms of council's strategic priorities and the folks for focus areas that have been given consideration to. There's a consideration in terms of the type of services that we're providing, and there's consideration for the quality of life, for example, in the strategic focus areas that councils identified that would be given consideration by staff when coming forward with the fee increases. Even demand in terms of the number of people, if it is that you have an increase in the fees, there is an elasticity of demand that would be attributable to that, which would potentially have the number of users go down, so you could have an increase in the fees and actually have less revenue. So we need to give that consideration as well. A long way of saying, there's a lot of different avenues that are looked at, but certainly one of them is in consultation with our sister municipalities in terms of what they do relative to what we do.
Good. And last comment, Mr. Mayor, it really hits home when you say costs are twenty-two million and revenue is six. You say, that's that's pretty dramatic. User, the whole concept of user fee is, if you're using it, you've got to, you've got to pay. I know, that's simplifying it, but I suspect the results will come back with, for the most part, user fees are going to go up. Thank you.
Counsel Kapodich.
Thank you, Mayor of Provinz. This is just a general comment, and I just want to make the comment, because I did receive a recent concern from one of our constituents on Ward Six, and it was about the city, it was about city transit and paribus, and the individual had expressed to me that out to our ward in Nixon Road, the paribus charge is two seventy-five, I believe, an hour, and read outside that boundary, everyone else is being charged fifteen dollars, not an hour, fifteen dollars for the transit fee. And so when staff takes a look at the budget, I just want them to consider a little bit about fairness, okay? Because we're looking, you know, when you're talking two seventy-five for paribus, you know, within, you know, five hundred feet or so, and then an individual's being charged fifteen dollars, I mean, that's a pretty significant change in amount of cost. So I'm just requesting when the when the come back, staff come back with the budget, to please consider a little bit about fairness in those geographic areas.
Counsel Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Maribella, I'm looking at your Slide Eight, the implementation options, and there's a number of considerations that are listed there, and one of them being ability to pay the fees. When you have a community that has a wide scope of ability, how do you how do you apply that?
Through the worship, so the ability to pay, certainly, it's just one of the broader economic principles associated with fee setting, and there are considerations where you'd have, and we consider, or you say, ability to pay, for example, would be perhaps areas in the building or construction industry, on the planning or building fees, where their, you know, their ability to pay or to use the fees may be much different than someone on the recreation side of services, where families who are trying to, you know, have an aquatic swim or, you know, your ice rental rates and that. So there's just different user groups in different areas, and certainly, we have to consider that, you know, looking at the demographics as well as the household incomes, and those are the types of qualitative and quantitative research that the city would have to do in terms of defining what that ability to pay is, and certainly, that's different from one municipality to the next.
Right, and I guess when we look at that recreation and those kinds of things, culture and that, because there is a wide scope, it would be a reason that if we look at ability to pay, that would put us in most municipalities at the lower end of scale in recovering user fees.
Right.
Would that be correct?
Through your worship, that's correct, and, you know, it's similar to other Ontario municipalities, your recreation and culture fees are generally the most subsidized rates, and that has the greatest benefit, and those are the ones that are priced below or within lower near full cost recovery, and that's done, to your point, intentionally.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, for my part, I think it was good that we authorized this study. I think it's really, really substantial data and good data for staff to use and rely on when they come back and make recommendations to us at budget time, and it'll be it'll be helpful to us as we try and make decisions at budget time. We set the user fees, right? That's what we we do that, so this is more information that we could apply as we set those. So thank you for your time and your presentation, sir, we appreciate it. Thank you to staff for the work on this.
Great, thank you.
If we can move on, Madam Clerk.
Under Agenda Item Five Point Two, Council Composition and Ward Boundaries, Malcolm White, Deputy CIO, Corporate Services and City Clerk, has a presentation with respect to Agenda Item Seven Point One Point Two.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, because of the large graphic files that some of our drawings and maps give us, we weren't able to incorporate them into a PowerPoint presentation, so we're using both today. Just give me a moment, I'll get to our PowerPoint. As council is aware, earlier this year, council did make the decision to change its council composition to a ten-member, five-ward system. Staff were then asked to go back and look at coming up with a five-ward model to bring to council. What we're bringing you to you today is a model that is draft, and will be something that we're presenting for information today to show you and to get out to the community to get more input, and then we'll be bringing it back for final approval at your meeting in August. There are a number of key elements that staff needed to consider that are affected both by case law, including a case noted in your report in the Supreme Court of Canada regarding representation, and we also look at criteria that are used by the Ontario Municipal Board in Ontario for deciding whether ward divisions are acceptable or not. The key in the Supreme Court decision was what constitutes effective representation. Certainly in Canada, electoral boundaries, whether they be municipal, provincial, or federal, the prime criteria to consider is representation by population. It's the main focus that you do look at. However, as noted in that decision, and as noted by the OMB, there are a number of other elements that need to be considered, as well as representation by population. There are communities of interest, whether it's neighborhood, whether it's development areas, or what have you, present and future population trends, and also physical features of the community, whether those physical features are physical geography, or whether there are man-made features as well. All of those things need to be considered in order to come up with a successful ward system that's representative of the community. Certainly, we did look at the population and the number of eligible electors in each of the new wards. The OMB- The OMB criteria, when it comes to population electors, do allow a variance of up to 25% from the mean, either over or under from what you would have. Anything under a 25% variance is considered acceptable by the OMB when you're looking at ward boundaries. So as you can see, for a five-ward system, elector-wise, it's fairly close. We don't get over 19% variance from the mean. And population-wise, we don't get over 18% variance. Ward One, as has been the case for many years, that area of the city is the most densely populated part of the city. And Ward Five, which is really, in a large part, the area occupied by the former Ward Six, is the least dense. Those are the variances over a five-ward system. For comparison's sake, looking at a present six-ward system, those are the types of variances that you saw with the electors and with the population. So you had, especially in the case of Ward One, a variance in 17 to 20% range, although the other four or five wards were much closer to the variances overall, the maximum of 10% below the population of the city. As well as the population lifer figures, we also looked at the communities of interest within the municipality. We did look at how the municipality evolved over time. We looked at what the original city of Sault Ste. Marie was and how we became the city that we are today. As we get over towards our ward system, and I'll just move over here, this is our proposed system. What we have today is generally wards that do reflect a certain amount of that historical evolution. Certainly, what we're calling now the Ward Two area reflects what the original city of Sault Ste. Marie was. This historic, this boundary between the new Ward Three and Ward Five, which is Old Hoolley Way Road, that used to be the historical boundary between the foreign Terren Torres Township. So we have tried to keep the history of the community evolving as a parameter that led to our decisions. We also looked at how all the residential subdivisions in the city grew over time. This is a color-coded map that shows the subdivisions as they were built. When we overlay the new boundaries of a five-ward system over that, there's almost no neighborhoods that are bisected by those wards. So they aren't able to be kept within one ward or another going through them. We also looked at development focal areas, particularly for this council with your corporate strategic plan. You're looking at a downtown development, downtown development focus. We encompassed that completely within the new Ward Two. Also, as well, there's the development focus in the northern end of the city along the Great Northern Road corridor and to either side of it. And that is now fully encompassed in the ward, which would be the new Ward Three. Proposed boundaries certainly accommodate future population growth in the near to medium term. We've been fairly static and shrinking somewhat over the past few years, but certainly, if we receive the growth that we hope has come along with a lot of our current initiatives, these boundaries should last for quite some time before requiring revision. As well, we looked at the physical features. We looked at the physical geography of the community, but more in particular, we looked at our road system, the man-made geography. And probably 98% of the new ward boundaries run along either arterial roads or rail lines, as well as using the municipal boundaries. So we're quite confident that they run along major features, which avoid confusion with Just before I get to our next step, certainly, we have our new five-ward system that we're proposing. We've added the six, our current six-ward system, just for comparison purposes. One other element that I really want to emphasize to you that we were able to accomplish with this redesign is when we look at the community data requirements, the gold standard for all sorts of data for the community is Statistics Canada, StatsCan data. With the new ward system that we were proposing, all the boundaries involved stay congruent to census determination areas within the community. And that means you can drill down to smaller pockets within your community and get to know a lot of data that's very, very appropriate when we're looking at community development or what type of attributes are with a population in a certain area. This is always good for staff, but I think looking forward down the road for future council members as well, future council members will be able to take this data and really drill down to know their representatives well, their constituents well, their socioeconomic status, a whole lot of information that you can't really pull out of our current system because it promises over census boundaries. So that's a feature that we think will be incredibly important as we move into the future, because as we all know, we're using a lot more data to drive our decisions. Our next steps in this system, we will have two public open houses on July 26th and August 2nd for anyone to come and have the, what we've come up with explained to them and to give us input. We will also be open at all times for anyone who can't make those open houses to have a dialogue with the Works Department to find out more information and to possibly give us input. And any requirements that are done through our proposal will be done during that time and please don't let that happen. And we will bring a final version back to you moving on on this 21st quarter on the table we decide. That's the extent of my presentation. And then if you have any questions, I'm just done.
We have Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Mr. White, thank you for the presentation. I know clearly a lot of effort and thought went into this process and your comments regarding StatsCan and our ability to, future councils to look at specific data points, I think is really, really important. I think it's 21st century stuff that we need. And I think this process, regardless of whether you agree with it or not, is moving us forward and more reflective of what other communities do. My question's quite simple. You've got two public open houses. You'd mentioned that you would be open for people to meet, to discuss, but specifically for the open houses, what are the times for the 26th and August 2nd?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. The times for the two public open houses will be four in the afternoon to seven in the evening.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much. Counselor Turco.
Thank you. To that point, Counselor Christian mentioned about the timing, but I'll get to that in just a minute. I think it's important for all of us here to, thank you for the presentation, Malcolm. And I was elected after we did the last, correct me if I'm wrong, the last review about the boundaries, which had an effect on Ward Four and Ward Two as well. I recall former Counselor Brady Irwin was instrumental in giving us the new boundaries when we, those of us elected in the year 2000. So it's important that we think about, I'm getting to a question, Mr. Mayor. The bottom line is effective representation for all our citizens. Just what we went through with the by-election, with all due respect to our new member or counselor with the Ward Six appointment, either appointment versus by-election. You keep talking about "we" when you say about the report here. Who is, who are the "we"? Is there a committee, a structure that came up with this proposal?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Turco. The primary people who worked on this are myself and the deputy city clerk, and we also had assistance from our planning division in developing the data.
Was there any thought given in getting a consultant or a third-party review on this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Turco. Certainly, we did review that possibility. The fact that I had been around and gone through an in-house process when we redeveloped the ward boundaries back in, for the year 2000, certainly gave me a comfort level in going through the same process again, especially since the criteria for the OMB have not changed significantly.
The reason why I say that, through you, Mr. Mayor, is that I just have recently a report coincidentally from the mayor of Tecumseh. They also went through the warrant boundary and council structure. They're about one-third of the population of Sault Ste. Marie. And I think their solution was they added another counselor in that final 60-page report. And it's available if anybody wants to look at. Timing of the open houses to Counselor Christian's comment, was there other dates given, considering we're in the middle of summer, July 26th would have an effect on August 2nd on the public and the taxpayers?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Turco. These dates are probably the best we can do given that we need to bring the final version back to you for the meeting in August. That being said, we're confident that having the open house available and also staff willing to meet with anyone at virtually any time between now and that meeting, go a long way to overcome the fact that we're in summer months.
And how we getting the word out, through you, Mr. Mayor, about these open houses and the public meeting?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Turco. Obviously, we will be doing a number of media advisories and getting that information out to our normal channels. We'll also have a specific page dedicated on the website. As you can appreciate, there's been a lot of material reviewed in order to come up with this, so it's not something that's easily communicated just in simple terms to vote. That's why we like the idea of having the open houses, where we can engage in conversation with people prior to them offering their input. However, we will have it available on our website. And as mentioned, we are willing to meet with either groups or citizens pretty much any time between now and the next meeting to ensure that those who wish to give us input are able to.
Thank you. One final comment, a question, Mr. Mayor, if you'll let me. So once we get the report back in August, that'll be the final report. We have to vote on it.
Yes.
Yea or nay on that one?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Turco. Yes, the bylaw that will approve the new boundaries will be at that meeting for you to approve, and it will be considered a public meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. White, I also want to thank you for this presentation. I can imagine a lot of work went into this, and I think you just, I believe you just answered my question. This information, along with your presentation in preparation for the public open houses, you're going to post all of that information on the website, not just dates for the open house?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero. Yes, we'll have a specific part of the website dedicated to this and the material that you see before you.
With your report that came to council, anyway?
Yes.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Bruni. My questions have been asked, but I guess my concern will be for the two public open houses. I don't understand why the rush to have it in the middle of the summer where people are on vacation. If we delay this until the beginning of September and the second meeting in September, we can have the public meeting, but obviously, there's whatever reason to have it in the middle of the summer, it just doesn't, I don't understand. But in all due respect to Mr. White, he did tell me that it has to come to the public meeting by August 21st to implement this for the next election year or so.
Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruni. I'll just expand on that somewhat. If we had been able to adhere to our original timeline, we would have been through this process by now. It would have come much sooner after the original decision to change council composition. Unfortunately, what has interfered was the provincial election and one of your members being elected and having to go through a process before a replacement was appointed. In our view, we needed to get through that process and have full representation on council before considering this matter. That is why it did get delayed until now. The reason we need to move along with the not waiting until the fall is because of the timelines involved with the next municipal election, which is next year. In order for us to finish off what needs to be done to prepare for that election, we need to follow the timeline as late as we can.
That's fine. Like I said, just disappointed in the middle of the summer, you're having this open houses, and obviously, you're going to get a, not a great turnout because people are away, but hopefully, people will submit their comments and their concerns through email or phone calls, et cetera.
Counselor Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's been some good publicity about it already in the, with the package, you know, being made public Friday morning and this item being there. One of the questions that I had put to me, and I'm going to ask you, Mr. White, because I don't know the answer to it, is there ever a situation where a ward is, I'm going to say, broken up as opposed to continuous? In other words, when we look at the communities of interest, one of them is the downtown and Great Northern Road. Because they're development focal areas, as you've termed here, is there ever an occasion where a ward could be, for example, made up of those two areas that are not dense residential areas, but they are the development areas?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. I know what you mean, but my answer would be no. I'm not aware of any case, certainly in Ontario, and I do believe that it's not permitted by legislative.
That was what I told the enquirer, but I thought I'd better confirm with the authorities that I've never known of a ward that was disconnected for lack of a way, but they're continuous flow within a geographic, right? Okay, thank you. And I guess the other thing that I just wanted to raise, I too wanted to thank you and Rachel for the amount of work. I know you started this months and months and months ago and spent quite a bit of time on weekends and other times, because there's a lot involved in this. You know, you both know that I like to be able to see a very mined-down map of our new wards whenever we get them. So I'm going to ask that if after the public meeting and after, I assume we're going to get all through this and go to our proposed new wards, can we try and get new ward maps for the next term, which may or may not affect someone like myself, that will really spell out? I still find, after all these years, that a lot of residents don't seem to be able to get information readily online where their ward boundary is. And I think some of it's just still trying to work out our engineering, our maps. I don't need, it's just a point that I'm reemphasizing again. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fata?
As you know, Mr. Mayor, I brought this up several years ago, and back then, I had suggested, and this has been brought in conversation with, I've had with people, but I had suggested six wards, one per ward, and then four citywide. And the reason I thought that was a good idea or plausible idea was I noticed over the last several elections, there's candidates, good candidates, I believe, who came in third in various wards, and they came up third with 3,000 votes, so 3,000 city.
I don't think anybody came in third with 3,000 votes, Counselor Fata.
No, I'm just going back a few years, Mr. Mayor. I'm just saying that, I'm just bringing this up only to say that we've gone straight to a five-wards, two per ward.
We made that.
No, I understand that, but I'm just discussing this point and saying like.
We went through a whole process where there was a subcommittee, we did community consultations. Like, that's one thing I want to kind of remind everybody. We've spent a lot of work on this, and there was a group of us who did a lot of work, and we had a pretty significant analysis, and we came back here and we had a significant debate. We've decided it's five wards, two. It's a matter of where the boundaries go, and we have. It's a matter of where the boundaries go, and we have frankly some pretty significant expertise on our staff who has spent a lot of time working that out. So, we're not going to revisit.
No, I'm not really trying to do that. No, no, that wasn't the intent. I mean, just, I'm just maybe thinking out loud, that's all.
Well, if you have a question, we'd appreciate if you'd ask it.
What is the deadline for this process so that we can have it in place for next year? Is there a date or is there a deadline that you can give me an approximate date that we have to have this decided upon?
It has to be finalized by the end of this year.
So, we got to decide what we're going to do by the end of this year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Fata. The deadline of the end of this year is to have all the work involved in, with the new ward boundaries finished. Once you decide on your new ward boundaries, then staff has to then take that and develop all new voting subdivisions for the entire process. That's, that's quite frankly more in-depth work than just creating a new ward system. You also have to consider making your decision and reflecting the needs for the OMB to weigh in on the process if it felt it needed to, and we also have to inform the Minister of Municipal Affairs of our new ward boundaries. So, there's a number of things post the decision by council that need to have all taken place and be ready by the time you get to the end of the year.
So, between now and August twenty-first, which is the date that we've set that we're going to have the final vote?
Yes.
Right? We're going to have two open houses, of which I think, for all intensive purposes, are going to be totally useless, because if we have difficulty getting people to come out to talk about budgets and about, share about ways to cut costs and cut taxes, and we get, for the most part, very few turning out, I doubt we're going to get that many people coming to these open houses.
We should still make the effort, Councillor Fata. You're right, we don't have a lot of people turn out to our open houses, but that doesn't abate the fact that we should make that effort to try and get people to turn out.
Oh, absolutely.
Where are you going with this, Councillor Fata?
I'm just making conversation.
Well, we're not, that's not what we're here to do. We're here to have a discussion and debate and not just make conversation, so.
Well, all I want to just say is that, I mean, the vote went seven-six. All along, I thought the vote was going to go like eight-four or nine-three or whatever. I had no idea it was going to be that close. I have a difficult time with this whole process when we're evenly split and the mayor has to make the final decision.
I don't, Councillor Fata, you've been here for ten years, I don't make the final decision, I'm just one of the thirteen votes.
Well, you did because you cast the deciding vote, Mr. Mayor.
No, I don't.
You did. It was six-six.
We all, we simultaneously vote, Councillor. Yeah.
I'm just saying, Mr. Mayor, these councillors voted six-six, we're evenly split.
I don't see any questions here, so we're going to move on. Do we have any more questions, Councillor Fata? Councillor Fata, sorry, Mr. Malcolm, Mr. White, Councillor Button, do you have any more questions?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. The report is very thorough. It's received a lot of attention. It's objective. OMB says here the things you have to consider. I think staff has done the job, and it's, I have not received, after all of this attention, and have you, I've not received one issue or one person calling me and saying, "I'm concerned about the breakdown." Not one email. And I'm going to ask, Mr. White, has your department received concerns from residents in the community?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Button. We haven't as yet, although I think to be fair, the story in the Sioux Star was just in Saturday's paper. Certainly, the initial stories have only come out at the earliest last Friday when the agenda was published, so I would expect some more time is needed for people to get their concerns to us or their observations. However, to this point in time, no, we haven't received anything.
And I suspect people are right that the summertime is not a great time to have open houses, but I don't believe this is an issue, whether you have in September, December, or August. I don't think you can have a major turnout. It's our job to represent a ward, whatever its boundaries are, and any, I don't want to call it interference, but anything we have to do may be construed as political. So, this is well done. Let's move forward, and let's not spend, well, I guess I'm adding to it, let's not spend many hours talking about it. Let's move forward, and hopefully in August we'll finalize this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Button. Councillor Nero, anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me the second question. Mr. White, you mentioned that once you have this prepared, you're going to provide it to the OMB. Can someone from the general public appeal this to the OMB?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Nero. Yes, a citizen or group can appeal it to the OMB, however, they have to do it on the grounds of the criteria that I've laid out. So, they would have to be able to demonstrate why other, why other elements of those same criteria should be applied to come up with different borders.
I don't think, the clerk will correct me, I don't think our decision to go from twelve to ten is appealable. I don't think somebody can take issue with that. They can just take issue with
With the ward boundaries?
How the boundaries are laid out.
Yeah, and I was just trying to understand if we provide this to the OMB and, for lack of a better word, they approve it for us and they say, "Yes, you're okay with those boundaries," at that point, then the general public could still appeal after that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Nero. It works very similar to a planning zoning bylaw amendment. When you pass the bylaw, assuming you pass the bylaw on August twenty-first, at that point, then that triggers an appeal period where people could appeal to the OMB. There's no approval required by the OMB if there are no appeals put forward. And as the mayor pointed out, it's just how the borders are defined in a five-ward system that are open to appeal. It's not the composition of council.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, we'll call a vote in the matter, all in favor? Carried.
Under agenda item six, I have a motion by councillors Button and Krampodich resolved that all the items listed under date, under date, July seventeen, twenty-seventeen, agenda item six, consent agenda, save and accept agenda item six point two zero, be approved as recommended.
Okay, so on the consent agenda, do any councillors have any matters in the consent agenda? Okay, so we have all in favor? Carried. There you go. Madam Clerk, keep going.
Under agenda items seven point one point three, committee vacancies. This is regarding committee vacancies due to councillor Romano being elected to provincial government, and I should just say that I believe that the procurement and procedures committee has fulfilled its mandate, although the other committee that wasn't on the list provided to you in the agenda was Downtown Association. So, I haven't had any members of council contact me with a desire to take councillor Romano's place on any of these.
Okay, so do. In lieu of councillors volunteering for this, then, is councillor Myers?
I'd like to just ask a procedural question. I wasn't aware of the Downtown Association. You're just telling us that one now?
Yes, and I'm sorry, it was appointed in a different process than the usual December one, so it wasn't in your package.
I appreciate that. What I was going to ask is, is there any chance of being able to defer, because I have a feeling councillor Hollingsworth might be interested in that, but would not have been aware of it as an opening. I know she's working.
We could put it over to August twenty-one if you like.
Particularly, I certainly obviously don't speak forward, we've had no discussion, but I know she's working quite extensively in the downtown area, and that might be one that she would like to pick up.
Okay, well, look, council, all of you are aware of the vacancies. If any of you are interested in filling any of the vacancies, you can contact councillor Grandetti. Are you interested in any of those committee vacancies?
Yeah, I, through, to you, Mr. Mayor, I could go on conservation authority.
Okay.
And then I'd have to let you know on the rest of them.
Okay.
It's just the timing of them.
I understand. So, then we'll have a motion, then I think it's appropriate, Madam Clerk, to have a motion to appoint, is the conservation, yeah, to appoint councillor Grandetti to conservation authority?
Okay.
And then, so councillor Turco moved that, councillor Button seconded it, all in favor? Okay, so for the remain, that's carried for the remaining of the vacancies. If any councillors have an interest, contact the clerk, and we'll put those in the next meeting.
Councillor Hoop, please.
Councillor Hoop, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question. If, are any of these committees available to the public if they were interested?
No, these are vacancies of members of council on these committees.
Okay.
Created by a result of councillor Romano's election.
Right, I see, okay. So, it has to be a councillor that would replace, I'm specifically talking of conservation authority, because I.
That has to be a councillor.
That has to be a councillor. Okay, that clears it. Thank you.
And we have councillor Grandetti on that now. Okay, Madam Clerk, if we can move on, then?
Under agenda item eight point one, splash pad funding, a motion by councillors Christian and Myers, whereas city council unanimously approved the construction of a splash pad to be located at Bellevue Park, and whereas both council and the general public are anxious for the project to proceed as planned, and whereas as part of the funding strategy for the construction of the splash pad, the splash pad subcommittee will be making an application for a trillium grant in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and whereas as part of the trillium application process, the remainder of the project funding must be in place before any grant is awarded, and whereas the city currently has three hundred thousand dollars of uncommitted funding in the subdividers reserve, and whereas the splash pad subcommittee currently has approximately sixty thousand dollars committed to the splash pad project. Now therefore be it resolved that council approved the use of two hundred and forty thousand dollars from the subdividers reserve to support funding of the splash pad, resulting in a total of three hundred thousand dollars of city funding to serve as the basis for a trillium grant application.
Okay, so councillor Christian, we're going to let you speak to this first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May twenty-ninth, councillor Myers brought forward a resolution that council approved asking staff to find resources, any sources of funding within the city to help finance the splash pad. Staff subsequently reported that there wasn't any capital funding in a two thousand seventeen budget, but they did identify uncommitted funds in the subdividers fund, and so this resolution is nothing more than an add-on or an extension to that resolution because the goal was to try to find additional funding. So, the subdividers fund exists, and the splash pad, sorry, would be a perfect example of where that funding could be used. So, it's obvious through public input and through council specifically that there's a will to proceed with this project and to do so so that the end result is a good finished splash pad. And the committee, I can tell you, is anxious to apply for the trillium grant, and we stand to gain up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we're successful with the application. The process is slow, it's long, and the deadline for application is October the twenty-fifth, so we're pressed for time, and if we miss this window to apply for this grant, the project is ultimately going to be pushed back indefinitely. If we get, if we can approve it tonight, we're going to lever our money with the trillium grant application, and it'll bring the cost to the city of this project down significantly. So, there's a need to move forward with this. If we approve this, we're simply leveraging our dollars to apply for that trillium grant. And if we can do this, if we can pull it all together, we're looking at roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a starting budget, which is really going to provide us with an A-one splash pad, and that's really what everybody wants. So, you know, council has nothing more to consider than to offer the money so we can move forward with the process. There's going to be no decisions in terms of a final splash pad and budgets for some time because a lot of stuff still needs to be worked out, but this will get the process started. If we get the, if we get the approval tonight, councillor Myers and I have to reconvene with the committee, we have to put together the trillium application, we have to begin a fundraising strategy because that's part of the project, and then our committee needs to work with staff to refine the design of the splash pad and the amenities that we may be able to incorporate over time. So, this is nothing more than leveraging some city dollars to get more trillium dollars.
Okay, thank you, councillor. So, councillor Fata?
Question.
Sure.
If we proceed to vote for this, and then are we saying that it's a done deal, that the money, the two hundred and forty thousand will be coming out of reserve and will be going towards this splash pad?
Well, in effect, that is exactly what you will be. You will be allocating the two hundred and forty from that reserve, whether or not it's used in full or in part. You will be giving staff permission to allocate that part of the reserve towards this project.
Yeah, so it's not etched in stone, then? Even though we vote for this, we vote for this, it doesn't mean that money is definitely going?
Yeah, let's put it this way, so it's, we're getting late in the year. Let's say you support this motion, you give staff that permission, but as we go through the year, we either identify a source of funds, or by the end of the year, let's say if we have a surplus, if we haven't spent the money yet, and it's unlikely we would spend the money this summer because we're already through the summer, the money can come from a different source and then not come from that in the future, but right now you'd be authorizing staff to earmark two hundred and forty thousand dollars of the subdividers reserve for this project. Whether or not you use all of that money or part of that money would be something that would be determined in time.
So, as you know, next meeting, there's going to be a presentation by the Downtown Association.
Sure.
Does that conflict with this resolution, or can they both work hand in hand?
Well, look, I could speak to that. So, as you're aware, Councillor Fata, because you were the mover of that resolution, and your secondaire isn't here today, so the resolution couldn't go forward, appreciating the intent of the resolution, agenda review offered, Mr. Hayes and the Downtown Association, the opportunity to present at this meeting. So, they could have been here to present today because we didn't want to defer the presentation because, to coincide with the resolution, because we understood the intent of it. So, they declined that opportunity to present today. So, if this, this motion goes ahead, your motion can still go ahead in August, but your motion's for a reconsideration. Whether you reconsider today or you reconsider in August, you could still reconsider if you have that support to reconsider.
Well, my understanding was that because the secondaire wasn't here, it was a moot point for the representative to be here. The secondaire was supposed to be present in order for that motion to be.
No, it was not moot because the presenter could have still presented the position the presenter wanted to present, and that could have influenced or affected the votes as you cast them today. So, so from my perspective on this motion, councillor Christian, the way I understood the motion, and I think your intention, so maybe I'll articulate that, and you can tell me if I'm on the right page, is the global budget for this project was well over half a million dollars, but that budget included some other ancillary functions and supports for the splash pad. It wasn't just the splash pad, but also some of the outbuildings that we needed for the splash pad. So, after that meeting, you took a look at it with councillor Myers and staff, and you looked at what do we need just for a great splash pad? And it isn't the half a million plus, it is less than that. And what you really want to do, and why you're here today, is if you don't have committed funding from the city, you can't apply for this trillium grant.
That's correct.
So, you want, you want the committed funding so you could apply for the trillium grant?
That's right, and because the bottom line is we want to get the splash pad built. There's going to be many things that are going to happen between now and when a final decision is made. We need to finalize these ancillary costs, we need to continue to develop the entire concept, and we don't know what our fundraising efforts will garner, so there's lots of things still on the table, and your point is well made. It's possible that no decision will have to be made for quite some time. There may be surplus funds, there may be other funds that we can access, so theoretically there may be part of this two hundred and forty, we don't use at all. So, it's all up in the air at this point.
Because my concern at the last meeting, which I expressed, was that I didn't want to move ahead if it meant sacrificing the size or the quality of the splash pad.
That's right.
So, what I was told when, and I just want to reiterate this for everybody's, you know, information from you folks that are doing all the work on this.
Yeah.
Is that you're proceeding with the same quality and size of splash pad as you were before.
Absolutely.
All you're doing is staging the funding of this project over two stages as opposed to one.
That's correct. The splash pad takes priority. That has to be built to the expectations that you want and the rest of council wants.
I don't want to downsize the project.
Absolutely not.
So, what you're looking at doing now maybe is staging the funding for the project.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, and to get the one fifty from trillium, you need this commitment from us tonight.
Trillium requests that we have the remainder of the funding in place, and so that's why we need the commitment from council by way of this subdividers fund. Then we can move forward.
Yeah, sure, so we'll go councillor Bruni, then councillor Button.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess a question to Counselor Christian. We're going to provide the $240,000. You're going to apply for the grant from trillium. If trillium doesn't come back, does that money come back into our reserve?
It never leaves the reserve because the project wouldn't be started.
No, no, but I'm saying, right now, we're allocating $240,000-
That's right.
-to the splash pad.
Yes.
Yeah. If you don't receive the money from the trillium, does that money go back into reserve and not for other projects?
Well, I think then that's a decision we'd have to make as a committee on whether the project moves forward or not. If the project doesn't move forward, then the answer to your question is yes. If there's other sources of funding down the road that develop, you know, I can't answer that at this point, but it would take the cessation of the project in order for the funding to be allocated back to-
Yeah, we're investing $240,000 to get approximately $150,000.
That's correct.
Which is good leverage.
Yep.
Okay, so we have Counselor Button.
Just one question, then maybe some comments. The subdivider reserve fund, I suspect people say, "Are we rating reserves?" Bottom line is, subdivider, if I understand correctly, reserve is for developers who do not provide the necessary amount of green space, so they put cash in lieu of that. Is that, number one, correct? And number two, are some of those funds can be allocated to recreation facilities? The answer to that one is not so obvious. What are the answers to those two questions?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Button. You are correct in what the 5% subdivider reserve fund is. It is a restricted fund. It can only be used for parkland purposes, and it can also be used for recreational purposes throughout the municipality. So yes, the splash pad does qualify.
Thank you. No comments at the right time, Mr. Mayor.
I'm happy for you to have those comments now. Counselor Button, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I think you said last meeting or the meeting before, if we're going to do this-
Let's do it right.
Let's do it right. I suspect, whether you're for or against the splash pad, you say, "If we are going to do it, let's do it well, let's have an A-plus facility." And I am getting some feedback saying, "Well, you know, Thunder Bay's got eight, and such city has four." And I've done a little bit of research, and some splash pads are called splash pads because they have a sprinkler system in the middle of an area. Some will call them waiting pools. So there are, you know, if a city has eight of them, they may have several sprinkler systems, but they're not what we're talking about. I'm not denigrating what other people have. Some have eight, some have four. Sudbury has eight, but Sudbury has Gatchell, Chamblesford, and so on and so forth. I suspect that one are located in each of those areas that have now been amalgamated. I noticed North Bay is in the same position we are, saying, gee, we don't know, this is a very expensive proposition. Halifax has, coupled with two water sprouts, one of them with four water sprinklers, and they have one with 21 features, jets, loops, geysers, tunnels, and the whole works. That's what an A1 was. So I'm suggesting it for sure, just confirming what's been said by the mayor and I, Counselor Christian and Myers, we're going to do this, let's do it. It is appropriate that we access money from this reserve. It is there for not specifically this purpose, but it is allowable. So I'm tired of splashing around, I don't know about the rest of you.
Okay, so we have Counselor Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was just looking at the chair, and I think the one that we're looking at, Counselor Button, has 22 features, you'll be glad to know. So it is an A1 one. But I also wanted to say that since this has been out in the media, and again, we thank the media for their interest in these important projects, I have had five or six emails, I've tried to forward them to the rest of council so council can hear some of the feedback. We have had people offer to get involved and do fundraising for us. There's a real desire by this community to see a splash pad. On the weekend, I was at Rotary Fest, I took a picture and put it on Facebook, and I had a number of people reacting to that, and it was a lovely little area about the size of two-thirds of this area in front of us with some hoses coming out of it, and the children were squealing with delight. I did a little video and put it on there too. I don't know, if you would follow me, you'd see my stuff. But anyway, point being, people really want to see this happen. It's been a top priority in recreational planning and feedback that we get from the public. So just thank you, Mr. Mayor, for clarifying some of our points that we're making, and we just want to thank the committee for bearing with us and working along on this project that evidently the communities very desirous of seeing. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Fatah?
Comment on what Counselor Myers just said. Some of the emails that she's been receiving, she's been forwarding, and I appreciate that, but I think most of those emails are coming from EastEnders. Sorry, I just had to say that.
Okay, so all in favor?
Yeah, I'd like a recorded vote.
Yeah, okay, sure, recorded vote. Madam Clerk?
Four.
Counselor Myers?
Four.
Counselor Bruni?
Four.
Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Grandinetti?
Four.
Counselor Hoopin?
Four.
Counselor Krampoditch?
Four.
Counselor Christian?
Four.
Counselor Fatah?
Mr. Mayor, based on the conversation that we had, I'm going to vote four.
It's a recorded vote.
I'm going to vote four.
Okay.
Counselor Turco?
Four.
Mayor Proffinzano?
Four, unanimously. We can move on. So we have-
Under Agenda Item 8.2.
8.2.
Got a motion by Councillors Hoopin and Krampoditch, whereas the municipal act gives broad jurisdiction to municipalities to pass bylaws in several spheres of jurisdiction, one of which is animals, and whereas local municipalities have an inherent responsibility to keep their citizens safe. And whereas, in accordance with Ontario's Fish and Wildlife Conservation Act, the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry issues zoo licenses. And whereas the O M N R F has no jurisdiction over exotic animals such as lions and tigers, and whereas housing wild animals in facilities that do not support their biological and behavioral needs can create unnecessary stress, aggressive behavior, and provide additional motivation to attempt escape, creating an even greater public safety risk. And whereas the municipality may be liable in the case of injury or death caused by an escaped animal from a licensed zoo, and whereas since the city of Sioux St. Marie has not instituted a bylaw banning privately-owned menageries, it may bear some responsibility for the operation of zoos within the city. And whereas the township of Muskoka Lakes passed a bylaw in 2012 regulating zoos and wildlife sanctuaries, now therefore be it resolved that staff be requested to report as to how best to regulate zoos and captive wildlife facilities in the municipality.
Okay, so Counselor Hoopin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this. I've done some research on zoos and wild animals in captivity and was extremely surprised that the province of Ontario has failed to properly address the keeping of wild or exotic animals in activity. I've learned that the O S P C A Act has regulations for keeping wildlife, however, the regulations do not provide sufficient public safety measures. I had the opportunity to actually speak to Councillor Danelle Hayes from Muskoka Lakes, and she said that her municipality decided to move ahead with their own bylaws in order to regulate any zoos that housed wild or exotic animals. That decision was stemmed from an incident in August of 2012 where a cougar had escaped from a zoo, and six days later, a family dog was killed by the cougar by crushing the dog's head in its jaws. The point I'm trying to make here is this could have easily been a child. There has been 30 incidences since, I think it was 1990, of this type of accidents with zoos. Muskoka Lakes said it was a wake-up call and decided that they had to act so that another unfortunate incident wouldn't happen. I have some information that I'd like to provide legal, because I have done quite a bit of research on this, and some of it's under the captive animal standards. It could be helpful when they're writing the report, it might save them a little bit of time. A few points that should be considered would be, I have a whole list, but I'm only going to list a few of them. I think a full inventory of the animals must be provided annually to the city, the police, and the fire department. These agencies must be notified in advance of new animals being acquired. Public safety, there must be a written plan outlining containment, recapture, and emergency procedures. This plan must be provided to the city, police, and the fire departments, and must be kept current. Contact between the public and domesticated animals, excuse me, contact between the public and domesticated animals must pose no risk to the public or animals, and must be supervised at all times. Wild animals must not be removed from their enclosures unless the facilities has expressed permission from the city by law enforcement in advance. Just have a couple more here. Training, all staff, a list of staff and their training, including certifications, must be provided to the city. An ongoing training plan must be maintained by the facility and available to the city upon request. The facility operator must have an animal care for each species. All animals must be maintained in numbers sufficient to satisfy their social and behavior needs. All animals must be protected from injurious heat or cold weather conditions that may be detrimental to their health. There must be a contingency plan in event of an emergency such as flooding, fires, or anything that may require evacuation progress. A dissolution plan must also be in place in case the facility operator is unable to maintain the facility. The last one I have, I have three pages, but the last one I highlighted was the disposal of animal waste and deceased animals must be documented in a waste disposal plan and carried out in a way that does not negatively impact residents of the city, native wildlife, and the local environment. So, like I say, I have three pages, and I'm happy to provide this to legal. I'm hoping for council support to request this report, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay. So does anybody have any questions, Counselor Hoopin? Seeing none, all in favor? You've got council support. Carried.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on bylaws. Madam Clerk?
A motion by Councillors Christian and Grandinetti resolved that all bylaws under Agenda Item 11, under date July 17, 2017, be approved.
All in favor? Carried. Madam Clerk?
A motion by Councillors Christian and Krampoditch resolved that this council proceed into closed session to discuss a proposed disposition of property. Further be it resolved that should the said closed session be adjourned, the council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matter without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by Councillors Christian and Grandinetti that this council now adjourn-
Carried. All in favor? Carried.[1776.12]